Thirteen thirty-one, look Monday, wala ng Zoom.
Di ba kahapon?
O ganun.
Ang ano natin ha?
Dapat 'yung mga sangod sa mga wala, di kayo sa akin.
Hi ma'am DC.
Tino 'yung wala dito, oh pagka dito, ako lang nag-isa, 'yung sangod nila dito sa akin. Ikaw, talaga nag-isa di pa noong, apat na 'yan. Oh masipag din 'yun.
Hey, boss.
Pagkatapos na roll call, ang Zoom ka ganun.
Para kay Captain?
Uh, sorry ikaw, kay Ong Momo, kay Bentin. Akin, maganda, napunta.
Oh, man sana.
Mas ayaw lang pero kung orabi tayo, putangin mo. Norte sa'yo? Tapos ilang ngipyo? Paktu talaga 'yun, ang Norte, mas balagay ang movie. Ah malalaki. Malalaki. Dili ngipyo. Eh, good naman ang legal.
Siya sa'yo malapit na 'yun.
Okay na pala.
Ah hindi malayo pa. Okay. Hindi naman si 'yung...
Ah ya, that's, uh, this is your brother? Okay, okay, good. Uwi ka ba sa akin?
Meron lang oh.
Dingo, dingo, ah tiyaga.
Miyo.
Ang miyo sa...
Wow.
Ano pa si Pedro?
Para.
Dun ako sa...
Your mother DP number eight? Sinalo ni? Tignan natin. Film movie. Pati kung... Oh. Dun na isinila, oh dun na na lumaki, isinila, isinila. Boss.
Idol.
Idol. Kiun ya po.
Diyan, gilu, gilu boss.
Can you say "buta daon dulo?" Isina.
Isina. Pinanganak sa bato.
Siya isina, tapos dun lumaki sa buta.
Session is called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng kuso, sa tipik moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, buya ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupi, di ka pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakit ng paghaw. May nilang ang pulahan, awit sa paglayang nilamahan. Ang isap ng wataw at moy kagumpay na rakingin. Ang pituing na paraw niya kailan, mapay magidiling. Lupan ang araw ng war, amit magsitka. Ayay lamig sa tipik. Aming likayan dapat may magapin. At mamatay ng daring sayo.
Please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by the distinguished gentleman from the first district of Caguean, Representative Ramon C. Nolasco Jr. Please proceed.
Almighty Father, we bow before you today as we open this session in prayer. We come to you with a grateful heart for the opportunity to serve you and to serve others. Open our eyes, dear Lord, that we may see the good in everything that we have. Open our hearts that we may feel as you feel for those in greatest need of help. Make us meek and humble of heart that we may listen more than we speak. We ask you, dear Lord, to guide our thoughts and our actions today. Grant each one of us a heart that is always ready to respond to your will and help us to accept our responsibilities with courage and trust in your wisdom. May you continue to remind each one of us, Lord, that all that we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the greater glory of your name and your people. Amen.
Thank you. The secretary general is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansha, Asistio, Atade, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barberz, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskuk, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Juanco Jaime, Ko Juanco Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, Di Jesus, Di Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimoporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimoporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farías, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Cortés, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Gallegos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gastataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limgay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, O Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ong Chuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Repto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondiolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Ieda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbango, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulub, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Tiyanko, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Jocelyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, T, Umalie, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Verzosa, Villia, Villia Forte Luis Raymond, Villia Forte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarazas Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christoffersen, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divinegris, Yu Diesel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Mister Speaker, the roll call shows the three hundred ten members responded to the call.
With three hundred ten members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a call room. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the Department of the Journal of the previous session.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the secretary general be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on the first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The secretary general is directed to read the title of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as messages, communications, and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of business, bills and first reading, House Bill 8565, granting exemption of generic and branded medicines from value-added tax, but by Representative Tevez Jose.
To the committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 8566, providing financial assistance to Abaca farmers and providing other forms of relief, by Representative Tevez Jose.
To the committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 8567, promoting and upholding the welfare of Gulf Cadis, by Representative Abalos.
To the committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8570, establishing special plate number for electric vehicles in the Philippines, by Representative Godes.
To the committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8571, reverting to the national government the discharge of basic health services of Davao de Oro provincial hospitals, by Representatives Gonzaga.
To the committee on Health.
House Bill 8572, institutionalizing Philippine participation in the international exhibitions of the Venice BNL, by Representative Romulo.
To the committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8573, declaring certain watershed forest reserves, landscapes, and seascapes and natural parks within the Dinagat Islands as protected areas, by Representative Ecleo.
To the committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 8574, establishing the cabayan overseas Philippine workers pension system, by Representative Salo.
To the committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 8575, providing for the conversion of the LTO Extension Office in Buug-Sambuaga-Cibugay to be known as the LTO District Office in Buug-Sambuaga-Cibugay, by Representative Palma.
To the committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8576, reorganizing the Boy Scouts of the Philippines, by Representatives Corvera and Alba.
To the committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 8577, amending section twenty-four of the Flag and Heraldic Code of the Philippines, by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric, and Yap Edvick.
To the committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8578, establishing satellite campuses of the Davao Oriental State University in the municipalities of Baganga, Cateal, and Tagaloga, Province of Davao Oriental, to be known respectfully as Dorso Baganga Campus, Dorso Cateal Campus, and Dorso Tagaloga Campus, by Representative Dayanghirang.
To the committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8579, strengthening the Philippine homeland security and public safety through education, research, and innovation, creating for the purpose the National Governance Council on Homeland Security and Public Safety Education, Research, and Innovation, by Representative Fernandez.
To the committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8581, creating the National Nutrition Commission, by Representative Marcos.
To the committee on Health.
House Bill 8582, defining parental rights, authority, and responsibility over minor and unemancipated children, by Representative Abante.
To the committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 8583, declaring July twelve as the West Philippine Sea Day, by Representatives Manuel, Castro Franz, and Brosas.
To the committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 8584, establishing Apex Hospitals in every region of the country, by Representative Abante.
To the committee on Health.
House Bill 8585, amending Article Four of RA 9241, instituting a national health insurance program for all Filipinos and establishing the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation for the purpose and amending chapter three of RA 11223, instituting universal health care for all Filipinos, by Representative Godes.
To the committee on Health.
House Bill 8587, establishing the National Police Clearance System, by Representative Bordado.
To the committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8588, requiring all movies, videos, live performances, museums, tourist spots, and theme parks, educational videos, and multimedia projects have audio description, by Representative Villanueva.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 8589, transforming the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy into the Philippine National Maritime Academy, by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8590, mandating the inclusion of anti-corruption and governance education in basic education curriculum, by Representative Villanueva.
To the committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8591, amending the Fair Elections Act to include static and lead billboards and other outdoor advertising media as low full election propaganda, by Representative Flores.
To the committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 8592, strengthening the governance and management of the Philippine Science High School system, by Representative Flores.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 8593, providing for the lifetime validity of PWD identification cards to persons with permanent disabilities, by Representative Abalos.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 8594, to establish the Philippine Environment Assessment System, by Representative Alonte.
To the committee on Ecology.
Communications, letters dated May twenty-five and thirty-two thousand twenty-three of the Kowa Chairperson furnishing the House of Representatives with copies of their annual audit reports for the year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two on certain government agencies.
To the committee on Public Accounts.
Letters dated May twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three of the Regional Director, Kowa Regional Office Number Four A, furnishing the House with copies of their annual audit reports for the year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two on the Cavite State University and University of Nissal system.
To the committee on Public Accounts.
Letter dated May thirty, two thousand twenty-three of the OIC Audit Team Leader, Kowa Regional Office Number Three, furnishing the House with a copy of the annual audit report on the President Ramon Magcaysay State University for the year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
To the committee on Public Accounts.
Various letters, emails, email, and reports submitted by the local government chief executives and officials regarding their fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the local government support fund, LGSF.
To the committee on Public Accounts.
Letter dated May thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three of the OIC Audit Team Leader, Kowa Regional Office Number Eleven, furnishing the House with a copy of the annual audit report on the Davao Oriental State University for the year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
To the committee on Public Accounts.
Letters dated June two and seven, two thousand twenty-three, of the Bank Officer Six, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, BSP, transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain BSP issuances.
To the committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Report to Congress of the Department of Labor and Employment and Department of migrant workers from July to December, two thousand twenty-two.
To the committee on Labor and Employment.
Annual Report of Federation of the Philippine Industries Incorporated for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two.
To the committee on Trade and Industry.
Annual Audit Report on the Don Honorio Ventura State University for the year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
To the committee on Public Accounts.
Letter dated July eighteen, two thousand twenty-three of the Executive Secretary, Office of the President, Malakanyang, transmitting two original copies of RA 11954 which was signed by President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Junior.
To the Archives.
Report dated July twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three of the Secretary General of the House of Representatives on certain copies of the following enrolled bills which were returned to the Senate and to be transmitted to the Office of the President for his excellency's consideration and signature pursuant to section eighteen H, Rule Six of the Rules of the House, consolidated versions of Senate Bill fourteen eighty and House Bill seventy-nine thirty-nine, Senate Bill one five nine four, and House Bill one one seven one, Senate Bill one eight four one, and House Bill five one one zero, and Senate Bill two two one two, and House Bill seven seven five one.
To the Archives.
Additional Reference of Business Resolution, House Incurrent Resolution sixteen, providing for the legislative calendar for the second regular session of the Nineteenth Congress of the Philippines, by Representatives Dalipe and Libanan.
To the committee on Rules, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, before we proceed with the order of business, may we first respectfully request that we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Adrian J., AJ Advincula, uh, who are here today at the plenary, and they are the members of the Panglo, members of Sanggunan Panglusod of the city of Imos, namely Honorable Lloyd Iman Haro, Honorable Loren Dionella Sakilayan, Honorable Larry Boy Nato, Honorable Georgiel Malixi, Honorable Dennis Lakson, Honorable Darwin Marty Remulia, Honorable Mark Anthony Villanueva, Honorable Ezekiel Rupita, Honorable Sherwin Kumia, Honorable Attorney Peter Emmanuel Lara, Honorable Enzo Gaston Ferrer, Honorable Gregorio Miguel Revilla Ocampo, Honorable SK President Joshua Ginto, Honorable ABC President David Sapitan Junior, Honorable Shernan Haro, uh, and Honorable Oni Katimbuhan, an executive assistant for the Sanggunan Panglusod, Honorable Jose Rafael Alarcon.
Welcome, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Also, Mister, also Mister.
Please proceed.
Also, Mister Speaker, may also we may respectfully acknowledge the guest of Honorable Rodolfo Ompong Ordanes, uh, who are at the same time here with us today at the plenary, and they are Miss Adora Miranda, Mister Conrado Fernandez, Miss Serenidad Fortunado, Miss Emma Santua, Miss Teresa Miranya, Miss Betty Pilpilla, Mister Tirso Berano, and Miss Adilai. Mr. Tirso Birano, and Ms. Adelaida Birano.
Welcome, welcome to the people's house, your house, the House of Representatives.
Also, Mr. Speaker, may we again respectfully request that we acknowledge also the guests of Honorable Romeo S. Momo, who are members of the barangay officials of the City of Tandag, Province of Surigao del Sur, who are also in attendance today at the plenary, and they are Honorable Mary Lou Luib, Honorable Eduardo Aveseda, Avasiveda, Honorable Vincent Martinez, Honorable Rocky Roger Pimentel, Honorable Samuel Cedron, Honorable Pedro Ponteverde, Honorable Helen Tadios, Honorable Irene Zafra, Honorable Luis Makiling, Honorable Judy Isiang, Honorable Sheila Mae Perez, Honorable Remi Momo, Honorable Helen Campado, Honorable Vicente Jade Pimentel, Honorable Reni Boy Trimidal, Honorable Roderick Acevedo, and Honorable Chari K. Makapala.
Welcome, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I now move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion approved.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the minority floor leader, the Honorable Nonoy Libanan, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The distinguished gentleman, Representative Libanan is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues. Last Monday, July 24, before this August hall, the Chief Executive told the 19th Congress, the entire Filipino nation, that in his own words, I quote, "The state of the nation is sound and is improving." Dumating na po ang bagong Pilipinas. He stressed, "Nagsisimula pa lamang tayo. Ang pagbangon ng ating bayan ay magpapatuloy pa." End of quote. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues. Hear me for this thing called kontrasona. It is not just traditional, it is not just normal. Kontrasona is truly vital. It is an offshoot of public accountability of accountable government, which is one of the defining principles of democracy. As we already declared, I quote, "Accountability is the foundation of any governing process, and the effectiveness of that process depends upon how those in authority account for the manner in which they have fulfilled their responsibilities, both constitutional and legal." End of quote. Inevitably, this house of the people will be made to account for the mandate and empowerment of the sovereign people the sovereign people had imposed on its members. Mr. Speaker, let me say this again. We, in the minority, were representatives of the people first, before we aligned ourselves with the smaller block of this chamber. We remain as members of the House, and we shall continue to pursue that empowerment. We commit ourselves to be bound by the demands of that public accountability. And so today, the minority is impelled to raise this paradigmatic query. What is the state of the nation? After one year of President Bongbong Marcos' stewardship, how was it for this country of 114 million people? Marc Levy, a French novelist, is instructive, and he said, I quote, "To realize the value of one year, ask a student who failed or passed a course." End of quote. This brings back memories of my elementary years in Eastern Summer. Back then, every periodical examinations, my parents were expecting my school card, the same way they expected those of my siblings. Our parents wanted always to know whether we did good in school or not. This had been the consistent practice for years. We periodically reported to the masters of the house, our parents. So, let it be in this people's house, for this house can never be and should never be any different. Its members should be held accountable for their sovereign masters. They should report their accomplishments to the very source of their mandates, their respective constituencies. Mr. Speaker, here's our assessment of the true state of the nation, where the government did well and where it failed. The minority also asked how the government intends to cascade the growth to benefit the many who are poor, the four piece, the other beneficiaries in the urban areas and in the countryside. We'd like to ask the Executive Department how it plans to pursue inclusivity in growth, if we are to share a common future or a shared destiny. After all, my dear colleagues, history reminds us that, however fleetingly, the developmental destiny of this nation is in its government's hands. Here we go, Mr. Speaker. Yes, we share in the optimism of the president. We share in the growth assessment by the executive. But because of this shared optimism, we wanted to know, Ramdam Kaya Saibaba, how will the Executive Department cascade this reported growth in the macro level down to the ground level realities? How can the poorest of the poor, the unschooled, the families of our migrant workers, solo parents, and the rest share in the benefits of bagung Pilipinas? Yes, we totally agree that the president, that a strong, I quote, "That a strong and stable rule of law will strengthen the foundation of our transformation." End of quote. But precisely because of this agreement, that the minority would like to ask, how can the government morally champion the rule of law when it has been violating some of its own laws? For instance, the Right of Way Act, a newly amended law has been violated by our budget authorities and by our infrastructure departments when the government had illegally taken private properties without paying just compensations. The Regional Center of Beokal Region is a case in point, Mr. Speaker. It is nestled on a private property where office buildings were constructed by the government without compensating the private landowners, and it remained as such for years. At times, the underluck of budgetary allocations for the acquisition of the right of way has stymied the implementation of various infrastructure programs of the government. As a result, developmental timelines of these projects have been drastically altered or impaired, affecting in the process the economic goals of the projects. This must be given priority by this administration if we are to meaningfully march forward. Yes, we agree with the president's aggressiveness in the country's investment and business promotions by going beyond our borders for partnership and international agreements. But the minority would like to ask, if the countryside can never benefit from the fruits of these international pursuits, how can inclusivity be achieved without a clear and workable balance between the allure of the metropolis and the pressing demands of the countryside? Yes, we agree with the president's optimism to finally put an end to smuggling, hoarding, and corruption in government. But precisely because of the shared optimism that the minority asks, how can smuggling be abated when it is abated by the Bureau itself? Look at the Customs Modernization and Tariff Act. It is a relatively new law. Yet, since its effectiveness in 2016, the Bureau of Customs has been violating its own provisions with impunity. Misinvoicing, misdeclaration, and other falsities in declaration have been going on right at the very nose of our customs authorities. All this because goods declarations were allowed, even without the benefit of an oath, a clear violation of Sections 412 and 413 of that law, which requires declarations to be executed under penalties of falsification or perjury. As a result, the express requirement that the description of goods must be sufficient and specified in detail to enable the goods to be identified for customs valuation is statistical purposes and qualification of the appropriate tariff heading and subheading in the currency of the invoice and in such other particulars necessary for the proper assessment and collection of duties and taxes. It is taken advantage of by the smugglers in cahoots with the corrupt in the agency. Mr. Speaker, it is not the anti-agricultural smuggling act that is deficient. It is the customs authorities negligence and cavalierism with the smugglers that is causing havoc. The Chief Executive needs to throw the books at these people. The war against smuggling was, after all, one of his directives during his first sauna. Yes, we agree with the president that we need to amend the very old law, the Philippine Immigration Act of 1940, so old that it even predates the independence of this republic. The abolition of this law is impacting negatively on the government's desire to draw more tourists into the country. It limits the response capacity of our border control and immigration authorities. We thank the president for endorsing the measure which this humble representation principally authored first in the 12th Congress until now. That was acted with spots by the House of Representatives. Mr. Speaker, we thank the president for appointing Secretary Gilberto Tudor to the Department of National Defense, whose intelligence, experience, and gravitas cohere with the need for the adoption of a calibrated external defense posturing, running in tandem with the administration's independent foreign policy built on the mantra of friend to all, enemy to none. Indeed, Secretary Tudor is an excellent choice for the deposed. But why can't this administration find the same intelligence, the same gravitas for the full-time stewardship of the Agriculture Department? The president's mind needs to be freed from the nitty-gritty of a department-level affair. The whole bureaucracy, nay, the whole country, needs his undivided attention at the hem of the ship of the state. The Chief Executive should leave the agriculture portfolio to someone in his bosom confidence. While food security is a pressing concern, it is however subsumed in the far larger concern of national security. The former can be delegated to a sober turn, but the grander national security should be handled by knowledge than the Chief Executive himself. Finally, Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, let me end this traditional kontrasona with a story adapted from the internet, so relevant in our time, so timely for today, and so important in our role as representatives of the people. A college professor was giving his periodical exams. He distributed to his students what purported to be his examination questioners. Then, he motioned everyone to proceed answering. But when his students checked on the examination sheets, they were all perplexed to see nothing on the examination sheet. Yes, nothing but a small dot. So, they were all astonished, completely baffled by the exercise, until the professor said, "Class, write a paragraph or two on whatever you see on your examination sheets, anything, but your time is up to 30 minutes, and it starts now." So despite bewilderment, the students proceeded to collect their thoughts and write something as directed. And when the 30-minute period was up, the professor collected all the examination sheets. After reading each and every answer sheet, the professor noticed that all, all as in everyone, wrote everything about the dot. Its size, its shape, its color, heaven the impression of it, and where the dot was situated in the paper, they expounded on it extensively, Mr. Speaker. Yes, all about this small dot, there was nothing but nothing written about the wide, whitey-white blank space of their test papers. Nothing. End of the story. My esteemed colleagues, that class represents the microcosm of our society today, both in unity and diversity. Everyone can write a book about the dot or comment on everything they want to say something on, and they can be passionate on what they believe things that matter. Never mind if it's just a small dot as distinguished from the wide bright realities of the world where opportunities abound. They determine their focus, their convictions, and everything can be centered on the dot of their... can be centered on the dot of their limitations. Mr. Speaker, we in the minority will not just look at the small dot of our prejudices and limitations, but will continue to explore, to suggest, to articulate, and propose measures that cover the white, whitey-white areas where opportunities for good and effective governance abound. Right at the get-go, we boarded the same vessel, cruised at the same speed, watched the same horizon, and observed the same dynamics of the ocean as our common ship of state negotiated its way through. You in the majority, we in the minority, despite the demarcation line we have pursued, persisted, and defended our respective agenda, not in the concept of administration versus opposition divide, but as the gracious majority, running side by side with the collaborative minority, all for the benefit of our constituencies. After all, the House rules talks about a minority, not about an opposition, as the tradition inappropriately established, that the majority that defines its legislative agenda by sheer force of its numbers without running roughshod on the views of the minority. We shall then collaborate with the initiatives of the majority for as long as they are geared towards bettering the lives of our people. We shall be the hump along the roadways when the welfare of our constituencies is threatened by organized silence. To the House majority, let me say this. On the whole, it was a productive year of argumentation or articulation and collaboration. As the song goes, it was a very good year. It was a nice cruise. We enjoyed your company. We appreciate your graciousness and your statesmanship. Until the next port of call in July 2024, the minority will be on board the same ship of state watching the sea lane along the way, scanning the same horizon, yet offering a different perspective from that of the majority. May the Almighty God guide us, and may he bless the leadership of this chamber. Let us face the future never wavering, never covering. After all, as the greatest martyr said, it will, non omnis moriar. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, my esteemed colleagues.
Thank you, minority leader, majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Libanan to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair Herson, motions approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Lagman to avail of the privilege our.
The distinguished gentleman from the First District of Albay, Representative Edsel Lagman, is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and distinguished colleagues, the contra-sona, as the name suggests, is principally a critique of what the president said and failed to say in his State of the Nation address. It also embodies the authentic opposition's suggested alternative programs and reforms. It likewise highlights the instances of concurrence with the president's report to the nation, albeit with some reservations. Let me start with the third aspect of the contra-sona on concurrence. Number one, the president is correct when he said that, quote, "The biggest problem that we encountered was inflation," unquote. And he is also right that the inflation rate is down to 5.4% in June from a high of 8.7% in January this year. He added that the surge in inflation is caused by the ill effects of the pandemic. The war between Russia and Ukraine aggravated by slowdown of production of oil-producing countries and the concomitant increase in the prices of petroleum products. The president added that his administration adopted policies which resulted in taming the inflation rate. However, the president failed to specify what enabling policies his administration implemented to achieve the lowering of inflation. Mr. Speaker, what did the government do considering that the war between Russia and Ukraine is still ongoing and beyond our control? Moreover, the pricing of petroleum by the oil-producing countries is also beyond our control. Furthermore, the emerging economic recovery is driven by the diminishing adverse effects of the fizzling out of the pandemic and the rebents spending on consumption and trouble of Filipinos liberated from the fangs of the contagion. Pray, Mr. President, what magic wand did you wield to ease the inflation or the inflation weighing as a result of the normal economic dynamics without much government intervention? It has to be underscored that despite the recent deceleration in the inflation rate, the inflation levels continue to be oppressive. A family's income can buy fewer goods and services than before. Alternatively, it has to labor more, to earn more, to be able to get the same volume of goods and services. Filipinos can only hope for the more bearable 2.4% inflation rate in the pre-pandemic 2019. Number two, we all share agree with the president's statement that the campaign against illegal drugs continues, but it has taken on a new phase. It is now geared towards community-based treatment, rehabilitation, education, and reintegration. But what is worrisome is that hundreds were killed in the drug campaign during the president's first year. The DASH project of the Jupiter World Studies Center monitored at least 342 drug-related killings from July 1, 2022 to June 20, 2023, including 115 killed during anti-illegal drugs operations by state agents. This number increases to 146 to include those killed by government forces who have been linked to illegal drugs. Number three, we commend the president for his strong words against smugglers of agricultural products. He failed, however, to mention the staggering magnitude of the smuggling problem. Brave words are not enough. Swift and resolute actions are imperative. We also note the enactment of the Agrarian Emancipation Act, which condones 57 billion worth of loans of agrarian reform beneficiaries. However, what the president most probably does not know is the more progressive House version was watered down in the bicameral conference. Number five, let us give credit where credit is due. The administration has indeed admirably succeeded in keeping the unemployment rate below 5% in each of the first five months of 2023 compared to the higher than 5% in each of the first five months in 2022. Moreover, the 2023 monthly unemployment rate has steadily slid from 4.8% in January to 4.3% in May. However, the adequacy of the income of those employed had to be examined, and the unemployment rate reduced. The administration should also look into the noticeable drops in employment in wholesale and retail trade, construction, and manufacturing. While the employment rate has gone down, the president has failed to disclose his agenda for the protection of labor in terms of abolishing contractualization, enhancing security of tenure, strengthening unionism, and approximating the living wage mandated by the Constitution. Six, we are likewise extremely pleased that the president strongly argues Philippine parents to have their children fully vaccinated against childhood diseases. And seven, the Bureau of Internal Revenue and the Bureau of Customs must be congratulated for exceeding their respective tax collection targets. Indeed, tax consciousness and responsibility must inherit in every taxpayer, from the hierarchy of leadership and the mandarins of big business to minor functionaries and small entrepreneurs. Now, let me go to the West Philippine Sea. Mr. Speaker, the president said that, quote, "We will protect our sovereign rights and preserve our territorial integrity in defense of rules-based international order," unquote. Perhaps in reference to China's incursions in the West Philippine Sea. This was a reiteration of what he said on February 19, 2023, that he would not surrender an inch of Philippine territory in the West Philippine Sea. Since he made that battle cry, the Philippines has not recovered an inch of territory in the West Philippine Sea, illegally amassed and arrogantly occupied by China. Mr. Speaker, victory is not in the arbitral decision. It is in the full enforcement of the award. We hope very soon the Philippines can proclaim that President Marcos Jr. has finally enforced the arbitral award after President Bigno Aquino Reto, seven years ago, obtained the favorable arbitral decision while President Rodrigo Duterte forfeited to China the said decision. We must seize the fresh momentum brought by the strong support for the Philippines of the G7 countries, European Union member countries, major world economic power Australia, and India, a member of the G20 and the world's largest democracy. All these countries have vowed to help the Philippines enforce the award by stopping China's consummative defiance of the arbitral decision and its continuing incursions and militarization in the West Philippine Sea. The Philippines can immediately host a conference of these kindred nations to make a bold resolve for China to comply with the arbitral award. Barred economic sanctions against China can be enforced for it to cease and desist being a renegade in the community of nations. Moreover, the latest Pulse Asia survey conducted on June 19 to 23, 2023 documents that 80% of Filipinos agree that the Philippines needs alliances with other countries to defend the West Philippine Sea and to protect international order. Mr. Speaker, two important events happened on July 18, 2023. First, President Marcos Jr. signed into law the Mahalika Investment Fund. And second, the appellate chamber of the International Criminal Court rejected the appeal of the Philippines on the alleged lack of jurisdiction of the ICC and its prosecutors over former President Rodrigo Duterte and his cohorts for alleged crimes against humanity in relation to the deadly war on drugs, wherein thousands of mostly marginalized and disadvantaged Filipinos were extrajudicially killed. President Marcos Jr. approved the MIF despite the credible and learned opposition of experts and economists, who repeatedly pointed out that the measure is ill-timed and lacks fiscal wisdom, considering that major negative economic indicators presently bundle the economy. It has also been posited that the fact that the funds which will be sourced for the MIF would be better used for vegetary support to the Annual General Appropriations Act for socio-economic services and essential infrastructure development. Why invest on contingent projects when funds are urgently needed to finance the national budget? Since the Mahalika Investment Fund is now petacomple, with the solid support of the presidential economic advisers, we hope it would succeed. We hope it would succeed. However, once the Mahalika Investment Fund fails, the heads of these economic advisers must roll. Mr. Speaker, the president failed to reiterate his stance for the Philippines to completely disengage from the International Criminal Court's jurisdiction, consequently the denial of the country's appeal, challenging the jurisdiction of the ICC and its prosecutors. It must also be underscored that the issue of complementarity, where the ICC recognizes the functioning of a country's criminal justice system, does not obtain in the Philippines because the principal suspect, former President Duterte and his major correspondents have not been prosecuted and brought before the appropriate Philippine courts and remain scat-free. Recognizing the jurisdiction of the ICC and its prosecutors is the only honorable option of adhering to the Rome Statute, whose applicability to the Philippines subsisted over crimes against humanity purportedly committed by the respondents before the official effectivity of the Philippine withdrawal on March 17, 2019. No less than the Supreme Court, in the case of Panghelinan versus Cayetano et al., confirmed the jurisdiction of the ICC and its prosecutors over crimes against humanity allegedly committed by Duterte and his cohorts between November 1, 2011, when the Rome Statute entered into force in the Philippines, and March 17, 2019, the effectivity of the Philippines withdrawal. Mr. Speaker, once a party, like a country, files an appeal, it barely submits to the jurisdiction of the appellate forum. It is bound to accept the decision on appeal, whether favorable or adverse. It is stoked from rejecting a denial of its appeal. Otherwise, it makes a mockery of the appellate process and becomes a rebel against the international order. Let me now go to the economy. Mr. Speaker, the sauna is supposed to be truth-telling with a pardonable degree of embellishment to paint a future of hope and a recital of accomplishments. either actual or perceived. But devoid of embellishments, the Philippine economy is still skewed against the impoverished multitude. The face of the economic progress must be the human image of the uplifted poor, not the logo of the peso or dollar for the dominant elite. For policy makers like members of the Congress, knowing and understanding the real score is indispensable in legislating responsive and responsible policies. What then is the real score? Central to economic recovery and development is the attainment of sustainable human development. Economic growth must be people-oriented, particularly for the marginalized and disadvantaged. We are distant from this goal when ducked the post with relevant indicators. On Human Development Index, the actual state of the nation's economy is not measured solely or primarily by traditional economic indicators like GNP, GDP, etc., but the Human Development Index, SDI, which according to the United Nations Development Program, quantifies, quote, "average achievement and three key dimensions of human development: a long and healthy life, knowledge, and a decent standard of living." The Philippines' SDI of 0.699, with one as the highest, ranks the country 116th out of 191 countries. The country's current score is below the East Asia and Pacific averages of 0.749 and the world's averages of 0.732. Gini coefficient. The Gini coefficient is a measure of inequality. The higher the Gini coefficient, the worse the inequality. At 40.7 in 2021, the Philippines has the third worst inequality in Asia and the Pacific, below Indonesia, Vietnam, Thailand, which have better Gini coefficients at 37.9, 36.8, and 35.1 respectively. On poverty. In March this year, a survey of the Social Weather Station revealed that 51% or about 14 million households considered themselves poor. After only three months or from June 29, June 28 to July 1, another SWS survey documented that 45% of Filipino families rated themselves as poor or a six-point reduction. This drastic decline is unprecedented. Considering that Filipino households were still reeling from high inflation albeit abated during the survey period, the SWS will have to explain if they have employed a new methodology. Nevertheless, 45% of Filipino families or 12.5 million households, which translate to 62.5 million Filipinos computed at a family of five, is nothing to be proud of. It is still at the higher level with an additional 30% of Filipinos considering themselves border poor, while only 22% said that they were not poor. Even the president did not claim this extraordinary reduction as a success of his administration. Debt stack. The country's debt stack at 12.79 trillion in June 2022, just before the start of the current administration. At the end of May 2023 or after 11 months, the debt stack increased by 1.31 trillion to 14.1 trillion. Administration economists always advise us against getting alarmed by the size of the national debt. They invariably point to the current 61% debt-to-GDP ratio, which is negligibly higher than the 60% international standard. Filipinos will nevertheless feel more comfortable with the debt-to-GDP ratio brought down to the pre-pandemic level of 39.6 in 2019. There is also a need for a congressional inquiry to investigate and validate the utilization of international and domestic debts the Philippines incurred during the Duterte and the present administrations. Debt service. More burdensome than the size of the debt stack is debt servicing, which is composed of principal amortization, which are automatically appropriated and much larger, and interest payments, which are budgeted in the GAA. This year's total debt service is 1,601,954,000 pesos, higher than the last year's 1,297,791,000 pesos. Debt service is expected to balloon further in 2024, eating funds for socio-economic services and infrastructure development. Economic growth. In terms of real GDP, the economy grew by 6.4% in the first quarter of 2023. This is respectable. But as this administration itself notes, this is the lowest growth rate in the last eight quarters. Net net inflows of foreign direct investments, FDI, dropped by 14.1% in April as investors remain concerned over an economic slowdown and elevated inflation, the Banco Central ng Pilipinas said. Data released by the BSP showed FDI net inflows declined to 876 million in April from 1.02 billion in the same month in 2022. The March Bali food foreign investment commitments amounting to 3.9 trillion or 71 billion dollars purportedly secured during the president's travels have yet to materialize. Human rights. Mister Speaker, the president utterly failed to mention the dismal state of human rights in the country despite the government's protestation that it adheres to the protection and promotion of human rights. The Human Rights Watch Deputy Director for Asia, Byron Laus, said, and I quote, "President Marcos needs to do more than issue statements about democracy and the rule of law to demonstrate a genuine commitment to human rights." Without concrete action to break old patterns of abuses and secure accountability for past crimes, his words have greater credibility. There is indeed a gaping chasm between the president's words and his actions. Even worse than the president's apathy to the current victims of human rights violation is his outright refusal to acknowledge that such violations were randomly committed during his father's regime. As the president himself previously said, there must be a high level of accountability for human rights violations. But how can there be accountability when the president himself obstinately refuses to even acknowledge the existence of these violations? The enactment of a human rights legislation must be prioritized and active human rights policy advocacy encouraged. The Human Rights Defenders Protection Bill, already approved on third and final reading both in the 17th and 18th Congresses by the House of Representatives, must be enacted into law without further delay. It is crucial that we closely monitor how human rights laws are implemented. On health. Mister Speaker, President Marcos Jr., even before the Sona, rationalized that the worsening shortage of health workers is due to their outstanding success during the pandemic, resulting in increasing demand, particularly for nurses in overseas employment. Unfortunately, this success is eroded by the country's failure both in the public and private sectors to adequately compensate and extend benefits to our health workers to prevent their exodus to foreign employment. Mister Speaker, a special health issue is malnutrition. Statistics on malnutrition in the Philippines are depressing. Every day, 95 children die of malnutrition. Twenty-seven out of 1,000 children die before their fifth birthday, and one-third of Filipino children are stunted. According to the UNICEF, the Philippines is fifth among countries with the highest standing prevalence in Asia and the Pacific, and is one of the 10 countries with the highest number of stunted children in the world. As expected, the corporate is poverty. Among the poorest 20% of Filipino households, the stunting growth is much higher at 42.4%. Not that the Filipino family is unwilling to give its children good nutrition. It is simply financially unable to do so. Government must rescue our children with proper intervention. Agriculture. Mister Speaker, the contribution of agriculture sector to the Philippine economy is falling over time. Over the decades, average annual growth rate of agriculture fell from 0.6% in the 1950s to less than 2% from 2010 to 2015. In 2022, while the economy improved by 7.6%, agriculture limped with a negligible 0.5% growth. Agriculture, the sector that feeds the nation, must be revitalized. Its strengthening will stimulate the industrial and service sectors. Higher incomes of farmers and fisherfolks will enable them to purchase more products from the industry and service sectors. To boost agricultural growth, more farm-to-market roads must be constructed. More post-harvest facilities must be provided to avoid wastage. Farmers and fisherfolks must be empowered to access cheap credit. Agricultural insurance must be made available to them. Research and extension services should be maximized. And finally, construction and repair of irrigation systems must be intensified. Some of these were also proposed by the president. Unfortunately, these veritable programs have been reduced to motherhood statements because they have largely stagnated on the drawing board. Likewise, rice and sugar importation should be short-term emergency measures and must be minimized. Mister Speaker, in the interest of time and devote more discussion to education, I will deliver a separate private speech on this issue. The proclamation of President Marcos Jr. that Bagong Pilipinas has arrived is a copycat of Marcos Senior's Bagong Lipunan. We do not need a recycled discredited slogan. If we play with words, we play with fire. Thank you, Mister Speaker, and distinguished colleagues.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Edsel Agman to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair Herson, motion approved.
Mister Speaker, may we request that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Romeo S. Momo, the representative for the First District of Surigao del Sur. His guest, namely, the Honorable Melanie Joy Di Momo Guino, the Federation President of all Barangay Captains of Surigao del Sur.
Welcome to the People's House. Majority Leader.
In addition, Mister Speaker, may we request that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Edgar Chato, representatives Jocelyn Lim Kaitchong and Representative Anna Vilosotrazon. The guests are from Ases Wow, a World Mission Society Church of God young adult worker volunteer group, namely, Su Bin Choi, Yoon Byul Jang, Yoon Ok Jang, Jun Ho Shin, Yeji Kim, Yan Su Cho, Su Bin Dyeong, Dong Hun Lee, Mark J. Avara, Daniel Militante, Shung Ki Park, Yoon Jin Jong, Yu Hi Hong, Su Young Choi, Yuna Son, Seo Yon Cho, Shung Yoon Won, Yoon Ko, and Yen David Abando.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader, please proceed.
Mister Speaker, may we also request that the guest of the Deputy Speaker Raymond Democrito Mendoza and Representative Maria Alana Samantha T. Santos be acknowledged, namely, Councillor Rochelle Gantuango Zureta, Councillor Irene Claire Pagal, Councillor Michael Erwin Ablang, Councillor Judith G. Navara, Councillor Galen Ray Lonzaga, Councillor Carlos C. Agamon, Councillor Francis Palmones Jr., Councillor Morgan Melodias, ABC President, and Blesy Kagayaw, the Sanggung ng Panglongson Secretary.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we kindly request that the guests from the Philippine League of Secretaries to the Sanggung ng Bayan of Sambalas Chapter, they are the guests of the Honorable Jefferson Kung Hun and Honorable Doris Maniques, namely, Joy Marie M. Gópez Daisy Ragadjo, Marisol Sudut, Eva de Vera Turda, Joanna Gian Bocado, Alex R. Mauricio, Nolito B. Basul, Irene Burgos, Gladys de Vera, Mildred C. Monje, Maria Virginia L. Escanyo, Denise B. Laco, and Maria Teresa D. Panes.
Welcome. Welcome to the House. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we also request that the guest of the Honorable Jervil Jinky-Bitrix Luistro from Second District of Batangas be recognized and acknowledged, namely, the Honorable Vice Mayor Angelina Lynn Castillo, Municipal Councillors, the Honorable Hazel Bulanhagi, Juanito G. Chávez Jaime Escolientes, Crispina Nepkaraan, Ms. Rona Roma Santa, and Engineer Evelyn Di Maano. Barangay Captains, namely, the Honorable Nikanor Conti, Honorable Anak Leto Orlando Panopio, Honorable Eusebio Dalisay, Honorable Rolando Maranan, Honorable Rodolfo Contreras, Honorable Henry Magcaysay, Honorable Celso de Brujena, Honorable Narciso Bulanhagi, Honorable Delia C. Adame. Honorable Delia C. Adame, Honorable Maria Corazon Garcia, Honorable Librado Cepilio, Honorable Cornelio A. Bulanhagi, Honorable Rinaldo C. Pérez, Honorable Narciso Comia, Honorable Bella Escalona, Honorable Maria Lordesgo, Barangay Kagawad Noel Cruzat, Barangay Kagawad Ben Behito Karaid, the Honorable Nilia Rosales, Honorable Rubens C. Gonzalbo, the Honorable Nelson B. López, Honorable Idalencia Adato, Honorable Tibursio M. Dalawang Bayan, the Honorable Jaime M. Agiri, and Honorable Sabino Brucal.
Welcome to the House of Representatives from the Second District of Batangas. Majority Leader.
Lastly, Mr. Speaker, may we also request that the guest of the Honorable Christian O'Navya from the First District of Masamis Oriental be acknowledged. They are Honorable Paulo Magallanes, Vice Mayor of Municipality of Medina Masamis Oriental, Sanggung ng Bayan Secretary Eden Mark T. Vosotros, Municipal Planning and Development Officer Jennifer Danga, Local Civil Registrar Fred C. B. Reyes, and the Municipal Budget Officer Elaine L. Virtudazo.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. Please proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that the lady from Batangas, the Honorable Jervil Luistro, be recognized to a bail of the remaining privilege hour.
The distinguished representative from the Second District of Batangas, Representative Jervil Jinky-Bitrix R. Luistro is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Today, I rise before you to shed light on a group of Anzang heroes who have long been the backbone of our nation's progress and development, our overseas Filipino workers. These brave individuals who leave the comforts of their homes and families behind embarked on a journey of sacrifice and resilience in pursuit of a better future for themselves and their loved ones. In my capacity as the representative of Batangas Second District, I undertook a meaningful endeavor to connect with and understand the circumstances and difficulties faced by our fellow Cababaians residing in Italy and Spain. It was a journey fueled by a genuine desire to engage directly with our OFWs and gain firsthand knowledge of their situation. To ensure effective outreach and assistance, I spearheaded a program known as the Larga OFW Caravan. This aims to comprehensively address the unique needs and concerns of our OFWs in Italy and Spain. The Larga OFW Caravan is more than a mere outreach program. It is an efficacious endeavor that offers vital assistance and support to our migrant workers and was organized in response to an invitation extended by the Philippine communities in Italy and Spain aiming to address government initiatives, employment-related concerns, laws that can provide assistance to their needs, and other legislative measures to effectively address the challenges faced by OFWs. Through the Larga OFW Caravan, I sought to establish direct communication channels with our Cababaians, promoting a dialogue that would enable us to understand their experiences, address their grievances, and develop effective solutions. It was essential to bridge the gap between policymakers and our OFWs, ensuring that their voices were heard and their concerns were given the attention they deserve. By engaging in face-to-face interactions, town hall meetings, and consultations, I had the opportunity to personally connect with our OFWs in Italy and Spain, where our migrant workers raised the need of OWA to revisit the Overseas Workers Welfare Administration Act in order to address the clamor of the OFWs protection during their old age and disability, notwithstanding that the Philippine government implements the Alkansha Program by the social security system. Beyond the roles our OFWs in Spain and Italy, our cultural ambassadors showcasing the rich heritage and values of the Philippines. They foster cultural exchange, promoting understanding and appreciation between our nations. Through their interactions with locals, they build bridges of friendship, breaking down stereotypes, and fostering a sense of unity. Today, let us take a moment to honor and express our deepest gratitude to our OFWs not only in Spain and in Italy, but also to all the OFWs in the world. They exemplify the values of hard work, resilience, and sacrifice. Their contributions to our nation cannot be measured in monetary terms alone as they shape the future of our families, communities, and country. With the significant role of OFW in nation-building, I urge all our fellow legislators, let us continue to assess, improve, and expand our initiatives to meet the evolving needs of our OFWs. Through close collaboration with stakeholders, including government agencies, civil society organizations, and private sectors, we can create a stronger network of support for our OFWs and their families. Let us work diligently to create an environment that safeguards the rights, welfare, and well-being of our OFWs. Let us champion their interests, ensure their protection, and empower them to thrive in their chosen endeavors. By doing so, we do not only acknowledge their contributions, but we also create a brighter future for them and our beloved nation. OFWs are the bridges that connect nations, carrying with them the values and spirit of the Philippines. Meanwhile, I extend my deepest gratitude to our esteemed colleagues and collaborating government agencies, among others, from the Department of Migrant Workers, the Honorable Secretary Susan Opale, Undersecretary Patricia Yvonne Kaunan, Labor Attache Haneline Siklot, Assistant Labor Attache Rosemary Luntau, and Administrative Staff Percival A. Labasan. From the Department of Foreign Affairs, the Honorable Secretary Enrique A. Manalo, Ambassador Nathaniel G. Imperial, Ambassador Philip Jones Louilier, Consul General Randy Arquiza, Consul General Elmer G. Cato, Consul General Maria Teresa Lassaro, Protocol Officer Miguel Pilen, and Cultural Officer Bernardo G. Pacalay. From the Overseas Workers Welfare Administration, Administrator Arnold Ignacio, Welfare Officer Norlita P. Lugto, and Welfare Officer Maria Corazon Sangko. And ultimately, from the Department of Tourism, which is our partner in the promotion of Besita P., my guest, the Honorable Secretary Maria Cristina Frasco, Tourism Attache Gerard Panga, and Administrative Officer Gina Marie Liberty Esmania. Indeed, the successful implementation of the OFW Caravan would not be possible without their valuable assistance. Also, I would like to once again acknowledge the presence of my Cababayan, fellow Lingkod Bayan from the Municipality of San Pasqual, Batangas. All my efforts and continuous guidance will always be for you together with the five other municipalities of Batangas Second District. As I always say, "Besitahin yo si Bitrix sa lugar kung san yo siya tinala." After all, I am just your Congresswoman. I am just your representative. You are the real members of the House of Congress. Whatever we have in Congress rightfully belongs to you. To the people of San Pasqual, thank you for visiting your house. And of course, ultimately, allow me to articulate my expressed acknowledgement and recognition for the Vice Mayor Lynn Castillo, for the Honorable SB members, barangay captains, LGU employees, all from the Municipality of San Pasqual, Batangas. Distinguished colleagues, once again, a round of applause to our dear Cababayan. Please allow me to end my privileged speech by articulating our Batangas Second District slogan: "Larga OFW Caravan, Larga Bayan ng San Pasqual, Mabuhay Bagong Pilipinas." Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Bitrix Luistro, for your privileged speech. Thank you very much. Majority Leader, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of the Honorable Jervil Luistro be referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair Herson, motions approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privilege hour, time having already expired, be extended for another sixty minutes so that the representative of Gabriela Partelist, the Honorable Irene Brosas, be given the time to avail of the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair Herson, motions approved. The Honorable Representative Brosas from the party list of Gabriela is recognized to avail of the privilege hour. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker, to fellow members of the House of Representatives, guests, and Filipinos viewing today's session via online platforms. Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. I rise today to bring to the fore the state of Filipino women, which has been completely left out during the Second State of the Nation Address of President Marcos Jr. Noong unang sona ng pangulo, binanggit ang pagpapalakas ng mga programa para tugunan ang mga kaso ng violence against women and their children, or VOSI. Gayun din ang suporta sa solo parents. Ngayong ikalawang sona, walang ano mang banggit hingil sa kalagayan ng mga kababaihan at sa pangakong programa hingil sa anti-violence against women and children. Is this an indication that one year into its presidential term, the administration has no accomplishment to report on women despite the fact that Filipino women endured six full years of macho fascism and impoverishment under the previous Duterte regime? One year would have been sufficient to heed Filipino women's urgent demands for lower prices, higher wages, and stronger mechanisms and protection against gender-based violence. But one year flew but flew by with only the controversial Maharlika Investment Fund signed into law. The question remains: What really is the state of Filipino women under the first year of the Marcos Jr. presidency? The quick answer is: Filipino women is living a life far from the glamorized Barbie world, but rather, a life inspiring economic distress and ever-increasing vulnerability to violence. Busabos, bugbug sarado ng taas presyo, at hindi glamoroso ang kalagayan ng mga kababaihan. According to the Labor Force survey in May 2023, more than twenty-one point fourteen million women are economically insecure in the country. They are the unemployed: nine-hundred-ninety-six thousand; those who lack work and income or are underemployed: one-point-nine-zero million; and those who are not in the labor force: eighteen-point-twenty-five million. Sa madaling salita, Mr. Speaker, mahigit twenty-one million kababaihang Pilipino ang kulang na kulang ang kita, o di kayay walang trabaho. Kapansin pansin din na lumobo ang bilang ng underemployed na kababaihan o iyong naghahanap ng karagdagang trabaho dahil kulang ang kita. Mula tatlong million, noong July 2022, patungong three-point-eleven million, nitong May 2023. Indikasyon ito ng napakabarat na pasahod, lalo sa hanay ng mga kababaihang manggagawa, na nakakon- na nakakonsentra sa mababang kalidad at kontraktual na trabaho pangunahin sa sektor ng serbisyo. Mahigit eighteen million ang kababaihang hindi ka bilang sa labor force. Ibig sabihin, hindi kasama sa istatistika ng walang trabaho, pero sa aktwal ay walang ano mang pinagkukunan ang kita. Naitatago ng salaman ka sa definisyon ng labor force ang ganitong malaking hanay ng kababaihang patuloy na pinagkakaitaan, pinagkakaitan ng oportunidad na mamuhay ng desente. Kahit iyong mga manggagawang kababaihan na nakaempleo, ay patuloy na umaaray sa krisis dahil sa sobrang barat na pasahod at nagtataasang preso. Nasa kwarenta lang ang ibinigay ng Regional Wage Board sa National Capital sa National Capital Region, or NCR. Kaya magiging 610 ang dating 570 pesos na minimum wage sa NCR. Pero kapag 15 empleyado o mas mababa pa ang bilang ng manggagawang sa service at retail establishments kung saan koncentrado ang mga kababaihan, magiging 573 pesos lang ang bagong arawang minimum wage mula sa 533 pesos. Dahil sa ginawang pagwasak at pagtiladtilad sa pambansang minimum na sahod depende sa rehiyon at sektor ng ekonomiya. Among Southeast Asian nations, the Philippines has the lowest net monthly minimum wage at 141 US dollars, lagging behind Vietnam, which is 162 US dollars, and Indonesia, which is 173 US dollars, according to Global Research Group PCODI. Pinakabarat ang sahod sa Pinas sa buong timog silangang Asya, at masasabing isa sa pinakamababa rin sa buong daigdig. Mahirap kung gayon palakpakann ang pahayag ng Pangulo na matatag ang ekonomiya at pinakamalago ito noong 2022. Lalo't busabos pa rin naman ang sahod ng ating mga manggagawa. Walaang anumang pahayag sa ikalawang sona hingil sa signifikanteng umento sa sahod. Kahit pakinilala ng Pangulo na pinakamalaking problemang hinaharap ng bansa sa nakaraang taon ay implasyon. Pumalo sa 8.7% ang implasyon noong Enero, na sinasabing pinakamataas na implasyon sa loob ng nakaraang labingapat na taon. At kahit sinasabing bumaba na ang implasyon, hindi naman ito naghulugan ng pagrollback ng presyo ng mga batayang bilihin at serbisyo. 12 pesos pa rin ang minimum na pasahay sa jeep, 9 pesos pa rin ang itlog, at nananatiling imahinasyon pa rin ang ipinangakong 20 pesos kada kilo na bigas. Nakabubuhay na sahod ang panawagan ng mga kababaihan at mamayhan. Ngunit bakit gustong patuloy naagaw buhay ang kalagayan ng ating mga mamamayan? Hindi tuloy nakapagtataka na patuloy ang paglobo ng bilang ng Pilipinong nangingibang bansa para humanap ng trabahong nakabubuhay. Nakakabahala, Mr. Speaker, na sa halip na desenteng trabaho sa Pinas, ethical recruitment, and at safe and orderly migration ang diin ng Pangulo, na sa esensya ay pagpapabangulang ng labor export policy ng administrasyon. Umasa tayong may sasabihin, hingil sa pagpapababa ng presyo. Pero dagdag na pasaning buwis ang sinabing prioridad ng administrasyon sa ilalim ng medium-term fiscal framework. Tax on plastics, tax on Netflix, definitely not fantastic. Ayon sa Pangulo, dapat paspasindaw ang pagpasa ng excise tax on plastic bags. 12% VAT sa digital services kabilang ang Spotify, Netflix, and learning platforms, pati ang mas mataas na motor vehicle user charge. Taong bayan pa rin ang patuloy na pipigain samantalang instant 500 billion ang ibibigay sa makapangyarihang Board of Directors ng Maharlika Investment Corporation na handpick ng Pangulo. Pinapapalala ng ganitong kondisyon ng mababang pasahod at napakataas na presyo ang vulneribilidad ng mga kababaihan sa abuso at karaasan. Alarmingly, a series of gender-based violence victimizing women has been making headlines since the start of the year on an almost weekly basis. Some of the victims were brutally murdered by their intimate partners. In one case, a woman was killed and chopped into pieces with her body parts scattered in different parts of antipolo. While in another instance, a mother was forced to witness via video call the stabbing of her five children to death by her partner in Cavite. Kasabay nito, inilulunsad ng mga galamay ng kapulisan at militar ang walang habas na pasismo sa kanayunan. Hindi man nauulat sa balita, pero nagaganap ang aerial bombings, panganganyon, pamamaril, at presahang dislokasyon sa maraming komunidad sa ibat-ibang rehiyon, ayon sa ulat ng mga progresibong organisasyon. Direktang apektado ang mga kababaihang magsasaka at kanilang pamilya na target palayasin mula sa kanilang lupang sakahan para bigyang daan ang mga plantasyon at minahan. Ganito ang kalunus-lunus na kalagayan ng mga kababaihan. At ito ang hindi naiturahan sa talumpati ng Pangulo nitong Lunes. Inanunsi ang pagdating umano ng bagong Pilipinas. Pero paano ito paniniwalaan at paghuhugutan ito ng pag-asa kung lugmok pa rin ang sahod ng mga manggagawa? Milyon-milyon pa rin ang kababaihang walang trabaho o nasa mababang kalidad na trabaho? At linggo-linggo ay may balita ng kababaihang inaabuso? Hindi glamoroso, kundi busabos ang kalagayan ng mayorya ng mga kababaihan sa ilalim ng Administrasyong Marcos Jr. Kaya't laging-laging may batayan ang paglaban ng mamamayan. Ito ang hindi nabanggit sa mahigit isang oras na talumpati ng Pangulo at nawain na bigyan diin ng natatanging representasyong ito ng kababaihan. Kaya't maraming-maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Arlene Brosas to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair Hirstan, motion approved. Majority Leader, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Franz Castro to avail of the remaining time for the privileges speech.
The Honorable Franz Castro, a Partelist, Act Teacher, is recognized. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat, Ginong Speaker. Magandang araw, Ginong Speaker, sa mga kapwa ko kinatawan at sa ating mga kababayan. "The State of the Nation is sound, and it is improving." Ito ang sinabi sa sona ni Pangulong Marcos Jr. Ituro ang tunay na estado ng bayan, ang tunay na estado ng bansa. Para sa amin ay laganap na kahirapan, kagutuman, kawalan ng trabaho, at napakababang pasahod. Mahirap kung hindi natin kikilanin ang tunay na kalagayan ng bayan at ng ating mga kababayan dahil in the first place, ito ang dapat nating pinagsusumikapang tugunan. Hindi ramdam na mga magsasaka ang sinasabing 2.2% growth rate sektor ng agrikultura. Totoong maganda ang naipasang batas na Agrarian Emancipation Act, pero kakaunti lamang ang sinasakop nito. Unpaid land amortization lamang ng Agrarian Reform beneficiaries ang nakundon. Mayorya sa mga magsasaka ay wala pa ring sariling lupa. Kalakhan pa rin ang ating mga agricultural na lupain ay pagmamayari na mga Panginoong may lupa. Kung hindi sapilitang inaagaw, kinoconvert, or napipilitang magbenta ng lupa ang mga magsasaka dahil sa pagkabaon sa utang at kawalan ng suportang pangagrario. Isa sa mga kulang na dapat ay priority legislation at Administrasyong Marcos Jr. ay ang batas para sa tunay na reformang agrario. Maliit lamang ang sakop at napakaraming exemptions ang Comprehensive Agrarian Reform Program. Kung kaya, marami pa ring mga hacienda sa Pilipinas. Marapat lamang na sa pamamagitan ng pagsasabatas ng isang tunay na reformang agrario maipapamahagi ang lupa sa mga nagbubungkal habang nagbibigay ng lubos na suporta ang gobyerno sa ating mga magsasaka. Dagdag pa rito, Ginong Speaker, mahigit isang taon na, wala pa ring full-time secretary ang Department of Agriculture. Hindi uobra ang part-time, part-time lang. Dapat magmula sa hanay na mga magsasaka ang mamumuno sa Department of Agriculture upang alam nila ang tunay na kalagayan, pangangailangan ng sektor ng agrikultura, at paano masusususunod ang samot-saring problema ng ating mga magsasaka at sektor ng agrikultura. Sabi ng Pangulo sa kanyang sona, na patunayan natin na kayang maipababa ang presyo ng bigas, karne, isda, gulay, at asukal. Sa ang palenke kaya siya bumibili, Mr. Speaker. Dahil sa mga nakalipas na buwan, hindi naman bumaba ng gaano ang presyo ng pagkain. Bagkus tumataas pa nga dahil ang representasyong ito ay linggo-linggo ay namimili sa palenke. Kung ating matatandaan, umaray tayong lahat sa presyo ng puting sibuyas noong September hanggang October 2022, na nasa 300 pesos, 200 pesos, ah 400 pesos per kilo. Noong Desembre 2020 naman, ang pulang sibuyas pumalo sa 500 pesos to 720 pesos per kilo. Habang mas lalong tumaas ang presyo ng puting sibuyas, patungong 600 pesos per kilo. Kung sisilipin natin ang farm gate price ng sibuyas noong Nobyembre 2022, 25 pesos to 27 per kilo lamang ang bili sa ating mga magsasaka. Malinaw na malinaw na mayroong mga nagmamanipula ng presyo ng sibuyas. Parehas din ang kalagayan pagdating sa ibat-ibang agricultural products, gaya ng bigas at asukal. Pero ang naging palagi ang solusyon ng gobyerno ay importasyon. Importasyong madalas na itinataon tuwing anihan ng mga magsasaka. Imbis na tugunan ang lokal na mga magsasaka at mga consumer, piniling tulungan ay ang hoarder, smuggler, carter, cartel, at mga dayuhang mga magsasaka. Kung seryoso si Pangulong Marcos Jr. sa sinasabi niyang tugisin ang mga hoarders, ang mga smugglers, magsampa na agad ng kaso laban sa kanila. Pinagmamalaki ni Pangulong Marcos Jr. ang diumanoy mahigit na 7,000 kadiwa stores kung saan may inaabot na 1.8 million na pamilyang Pilipino. Maliit lang din ang inabot nito. Ayon sa Social Weather Survey, 21.6 million ay food poor or borderline poor. Ang Band-Aid solution na ito ay hindi ang dapat na magiging tanging solusyon sa pambabarat sa mga magsasaka at pagbebenta ng mahal sa mga mamimili na mga trader or middleman. Bumababa man ang inflation rate? Hindi ito nangangahulugang bumaba ang presyo ng mga bilihin. Kung hindi alam na nakarami, ang inflation rate ay tantos ng pagtaas ng presyo sa parehas na panahon sa nakalipas na taon. Ang nababalitaan nating bumagal ang 6.1% inflation rate noong May 2023, patungong 5.4% nitong Hunyo 2023. Ang kahulugan kasi nito ay, una, tumaas ng 6.1% ang inflation rate nitong May 2023 kumpara noong May 2022. Tumaas ng 5.4% ang inflation rate nitong Hunyo 2023 kumpara naman sa Hunyo 2022. Kung may bubusisiin pa natin ang pagtingin sa mga istatistika ng PSA, o Philippine Statistics Authority, makikita natin na tumaas pa nga ang inflation rate ng bigas, karne, isda, gulay, at asukal. Halimbawa, Ginong Speaker, ang rice ay tumaas ng 3.6% inflation rate. Ang mais, o corn, ay tumaas ng 5.3% inflation rate. Ang meat and other parts of slaughtered land animals ay 0.3% inflation rate. Ang gatas at other dairy products and eggs, 11.2% inflation rate. Fish and other seafood, 6.2% inflation rate. Ang ating mga vegetables, tubers, cooking bananas, and pulses, 12.7% inflation rate. Ang sugar, confectionery, and desserts, 28.9% inflation rate. Labas sa mga istatistika na nakalap ng PSA, baka kailangan magreality check si Pangulong Marcos Jr. Dahil hindi maka-relate ang mga ordinaryong mamamayan, mamamayang Pilipino na sa ngayo'y pilit na pinagkakasya ang napakaliit na sahod araw-araw, o buwan-buwan para makabili ng pamahal na pamahal ng presyo ng mga bilihin. Sa katunayan, ilan sa mga priority legislation at administrasyong Marcos Jr. ngayong 2023 ay tungkol sa pagbuwis sa ating mga mamamayan? Excise tax on single-use plastics, VAT on digital services, at kahapon lang ipinasa 'yung pagdaragdag ng motor vehicle users' charge, road user's tax, na talagang aapekto doon sa ating mga middle-class na sektor. Kung kami sa makabayan ang tatanungian, Ginong Speaker, hindi dagdag na buwis ang kailangan ng ating mga kababayan kung pagtataas ng kakarampot na kinikita kumpara sa kinataas na kakarampot na kinikita ng ating mga manggagawa. Speaking of maliit na sahod, silent si Pangulong Marcos Jr. sa usapi ng umento sa sahod na mga manggagawa. Dinedma ng Pangulo ang kahilingan na mga manggagawang Pilipino. Kamakailan, nagpetisyon ang mga manggagawa na itaas ang minimum dahil sa pagsusumikap at sama-samang pagkilos ng mga manggagawa. Napilitan ang Regional Wage Board sa NCR na itas ito sa 40 pesos sa minimum wage. Sigaw ngayon ang mga manggagawa sa ibat-ibang sulok ng bansa. Hindi lang sana all, Ginong Speaker, sana more. Sa taas ng presyo ng mga bilihin, halos walang mabibili ang 40 pesos. Ang family living wage ngayon ay 1,100 pesos kada araw, na malayong-malayo sa 610 pesos sa arawang sahod para mabuhay ng desente ang isang pamilyang Pilipino sa National Capital Region. Lalo na sa ibang rehiyon kung saan hindi hamak na mas mababa ang minimum na sahod. Ang pinalanawagan natin ay 750 across the board nationwide. Dapat magkaroon ng national minimum wage na nakabatay sa family living wage imbis na regional wage. Dedma rin ang Pangulo sa mga government employees, kahit na wala na tayong inaasahang pagtaas ng sahod sa susunod na taon. Walaman lang tayong narinig, nakaluskos sa usapi na ito. Kaya kasama ng government employees, pinapanawagan natin na itaas sa 33,000 ang minimum na sahod sa ating mga pampublikong sektor at 50,000 entry level sa salary na mga guro at nurse. Buti na lang, meron tayong nakita na isinabmit ng ating Deputy Speaker Rekto kaugnay noong Salary Standardization Law. Mapapaano ka na lang sa sinambit ng Pangulo na 95.7% ang employment sa Pilipinas at 4.3% lang ang walang trabaho. Kung titiladtila rin natin ang 95.7% employment rate na ito, malalaman natin na lugmok sa kalagayan ng ating ekonomiya simula pa noong maupo ang Marcos Administration. Mula sa 15.65 million noong Hunyo 2022, lubhang dumadami ang part-time workers, o 'yung mga nagtatrabaho, kulang sa 40 oras na patungong 17.11 million noong May 2023. Samantalang, 'yung mga with job, not at all work, ay tumaas ng 372,000, 732, patungong 737 to 420. Ang mga full-time workers bumaba ang bilang mula 30.56 million, patungang 30.42 million. Ang self-employed tumaas mula sa 13.03 million, patungo sa 13.58 million. Ang mga unpaid family workers tumaas mula sa 3.74 million, patungong 4.43 million. Ang nilikhang trabaho sa unang taon ng panunongkulan ni Pangulong Marcos Jr. kalakhan ay temporary, irregular, at insecure. Tugon rin ni Pangulong Marcos Jr. sa problema ng kakulangan ng nurses sa bansa. We have become victims of our... We have become victims of our own success. Ang mas tamang sabihin ay indikasyon ito ng pagpapabaya at walang pakialam sa hirap na madinaranas ng ating mga nurse at mga health workers sa buong bansa. Gaya naming mga guro, overwork and underpaid ang ating mga health workers. Kahit tinapos na ni Pangulong Marcos Jr. ang declarasyon ng public health emergency sa Pilipinas, hindi dapat matapos ang laban natin para sa mas mataas at disenting pasahod, sapat na benepisyo at makataong kondisyon sa paggawa para sa ating mga nurse at iba't iba pang mga health workers. Kasabay nito, hindi rin nabanggit ni Pangulong Marcos Jr. ang pangangailangan ng dagdag na mga guro at classroom sa ating bansa. Ayon sa DEEPED, mayroong 165,000 na kailangang classroom para sa ating mga estudyante. Nagawa nung Administrasyong Aquino kung saan nakapaghire ng 29,166 teachers per year. At nung nakaraang Administrasyong Duterte ay nakapaghire ng 25,000 teachers per year. Kung lalaana ng sapat na budget, kayang-kaya nating maghire ng 30,000 na mga guro at magpagawa ng 50,000 na mga classroom kada taon. Hindi lang para sa ating mga estudyante ang pagpapagawa ng sapat na bilang ng classroom. Pagpapababa ng class size at pagha-hire ng sapat na bilang na mga guro ay magbibigay ng alwan sa ating mga gurong overwork at underpaid. Sa Sona mismo, sinabi ng ating pangulo na ipamamahagi na sa kanila sa ating mga health workers ang COVID health emergency allowance at iba pang mga nabimbing benepisyo. Reaksyon ng mga Pilipino, ha? Ngayon lang? Itong hinahanap ng sambayanan? Tunay na reforma sa lupa at mga reformang agrario sa sahod itaas, presyo ibaba, sapat na sahod na may nararapat na benepisyo, hindi ang maharlika investments scam. Ipinasanang walang konsultasyon sa mga manggawat magsasaka at minadiling inapruba ng Kongreso sa pamamagitan na certification, kahit wala namang emergency at tutugunan. Inamayandahan sa pamamagitan lang ng Viber at kahit walang konstitusyon ng Pilipinas ang legislation through Viber. Kahit na sinasabi ng mga mababatas na hindi kasama ang pensyon na mga manggawat government employees, malinaw ang interes na economic managers ng Administrasyong Marcos Jr. na gamitin ang pension fund sa ating mga mamayan at i-invest ito. Ang 500 billion pesos na ihigupin para sa capitalization ng maharlika investment fund na sana ay mailalaan natin sa mas importanting mga programa na matutugunan ng tunay na emergency ay ahawakan ng mga appointees ng Pangulong Marcos Jr., kapwa ng mga bumubuo ng Board of Directors at advisory bodies. Pangamba ng mga manggawang naguhulog para sa kanilang pensyon, mga pensioner, mga magsasaka, MSMEs, at ng taong bayan ay baka mauwi lamang ito sa korapsyon at kronismo. Ngayon pa lamang ay wala pang maharlika investments scam. Ay nakadarinig na tayo ng 3 million pesos na logo ng PAGCOR, 49 million Love the Philippines ng Department of the RISM, dagdag pa ang korapsyon sa Phil Health, Farmali, Fertilizers scam, at iba pa kung wala ring napapanagot hanggang sa ngayon. Imbis na tugisin ang mga korap na tiwali, ang mga tinutugis at kinakasuhan at pinapatay at ang mga aktibista at mga ordinaryong mamamayan. Gamit ang terror law, kinakasuhan ng mga gawagawang kaso ang mga mamamayan para patahimikin at hindi paglaban ang kanilang mga karapatan. Kung anong tapang at bagsik ng Administrasyong Marcos Jr. sa panredtag at panunupil sa mga Pilipino, gano naman katahimik at katakot sa imbestigasyon ng International Criminal Court sa kaso ng crimes against humanity ni dating Pangulong Duterte. Libo-libong mga kababayan natin ang pinatay sa kanyang madugung war on drugs habang ang mga drug lord ay pinapatakas lamang. Ang foreign policy ni Pangulong Marcos Jr. at Duterte na friend to all and enemy to none ay nagpapatuloy lamang sa pamamayagpag ng US at China sa ating teritoryo at pambabastos sa ating soberania. Ginagamit ng US sa pamamagitan ng EDCA, BFA, at MDT at military bases nito sa iba't ibang sulok ng bansa upang isulong ang sarili nitong mga adhikain. Edinadawit ang Pilipinas sa planong US na magkagera laban sa China. Bukod pa rito 'yung mahabang listahan na mga kaso ng human rights violations ng US sa Pilipinas. Pero imbis na wakasan, ang tagibang na treaty at agreements na ito dinagdagan pa kamakailan ng apat na US bases. Ang China naman ay pinababayaang magtayo ng mga artifisyal islands at okupahan ang mga bahagi ng West Philippine Sea. Umaabot na sa punto na kayang-kayang mangharas na mga Chinese Coast Guard na mga Pilipinong mangingisda maging ang ating mga Philippine Coast Guard sa sarili nating teritoryo. Nangyayari ito, ginong speaker, sa kabila ng bilyong-bilyong pondong inilalaan para sa AFP Modernization Program na nanatiling tikom at bahag ang buntot ng Armed Forces of the Philippines, hindi ginagawa ng lubusan ng kanilang mandato na proteksyonan ng ating bansa laban sa bantang panlabas. Kung kami ang tatanungin, ang dapat maging tindig ng Pilipinas ay atin ang pinas, US at China layas. Nakakalungkot pero hindi nakapagtaka na walang achievement na maibibida si President Marcos Jr. na nagawa nitong unang taon niyang panunungkulan. Walang natugunan sa pangunahing mga pangangailangan at panawaga ng mga naghihikas nating mga kababayan. Kahit patutunguhan adhikain ng bansa ay hindi man nang nabanggit. Kung kaya, taong bayan na ang magbigay ng listahan na dapat gawin at unahin ng Administrasyong Marcos. Sahod itaas, presyo ibaba. Dagdag na sahod para sa ating mga government employees, teachers, and nurse. COVID benefits ibigay nauna. Magtayo ng mga classrooms, 50,000, maghire ng 30,000 na mga teachers per year. Tunay na agraryong, reformang agraryo ipatupad. Imbestigahan ang mga aligasyon ng korapsyon, panagutin ang mga tiwali. Ibasura ang terror law, stop the killing and other human rights violations, pahintulutan ang imbestigasyon ng ICC. At huli, atin ang pinas, US and China layas. Magandang hapon muli sa ating lahat. Maraming salamat, ginong speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Castro, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Arlen Castro to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
I... Your Honor, I move that I withdraw the previous motion. There is another member of the House who would a bill of the privilege hour. I now move that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Manuel of the Kabataan Partilis to a bill of the remaining minutes of the privilege hour.
So first, is there any objection to reopening the privilege hour? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. At this juncture, the chair would like to recognize the representative from the Kabataan Partilis. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mapagpala 'yung araw, Mister Speaker, pati na rin sa mga kapakonggresista at mga kabataang Pilipino na nanonood sa livestream. Marami nang nabanggit ang nao ng mga kagalang-galang na mambabatas. Ngunit, may maidadagdag pa tayo para sa huling kontrasona sa araw na ito. Noong Lunes, inilahad ng Malakanyang sa session hall na ito ang kanyang bersyon ng State of the Nation. Ngayon, sa parehong session hall, tumatayo ang representasyon ng kabataan para sa personal at kolektibong privilehiyo na ilahad ang tunay na State of the Nation mula sa punto de vista ng kabataan at mamamayan. Una, Mister Speaker, hindi kapanipaniwala na meron tayong strong macroeconomic fundamentals kung patuloy nating ibabaling sa external factors lamang ang pagtaas ng presyo ng mga bilihin. Nasa denial stage pa rin tayo habang hindi natin kinikilala na ang mahinang sektor ng agrikultura at manupaktura ay nagbubunga ng pagiging vulnerable ng ating bansa sa inflation ng mga inaangkat na produkto. Wala rin tayong strong macroeconomic fundamentals kung masyado tayong nakasalalay sa dayuhang pamumuhunan para isalba ang ating ekonomiya mula sa krisis. Bagamat humo pa sa 5.4% ang inflation rate ngayong Junyo, Pilipinas pa rin ang nangunguna bilang may pinakamataas na inflation rate sa lahat ng bansa sa Southeast Asia. Partikular sa edukasyon, taon-taon tumataas ang average rate ng tuition and other school fees at nagpa-plano ang malalaking pribadong pamantasan sa bansa na magtaas na mga bayarin mula tatlo hanggang sampung porsyento. Basic math na lang din, bilang isang math graduate, sumasangayon ako sa ating math teacher mula sa Act Teachers Partilis. Kapag bumababa ang inflation rate, hindi ibig sabihin nito na bumababa na rin ang presyo ng mga bilihin. Hangga't positive ang inflation rate, nangangahulagan ito na tumataas pa rin ang presyo ng mga bilihin at hindi bumabalik sa dating presyo. Hindi malilin lang ang ating mga kababayan na bumababa na ang presyo ng mga bilihin dahil sila naman araw-araw ang nagsisikap na pagkasyahin ang kakarampot na kita o sahod. It is deceptive to claim that prices of basic goods and commodities have lowered just because there are some kadiwa stores selling cheaper stuff. Ang katotohanan, artifisyal lamang ang pagpapababa ng presyo sa kadiwa stores. Taliwas sa umano'y prinsipyo ng kadiwa na tinatanggal ang mga middleman at dinediretsyo ang mga produkto mula sakahan papunta sa mga consumer, ang ginagawa lamang ng ating gobyerno ay hinuhugot ang nakatabing supply ng bigas para ibenta. Ang bigas na binibenta ng 25 pesos per kilo sa kadiwa stores ay mula sa mga buffer stock ng National Food Authority na ayon sa umiiral na batas ay dapat gamitin lamang para sa mga disaster relief operation. Imbis na itabi ang supply para ipamahagi ng libre sa panahon ng sakuna, ginagamit ito ng Marcos Jr. admin para ibenta sa mamamayan at maglikha ng ilusyon na bumababa na ang presyo ng mga batayang bilihin. Sa totoo lang, Mister Speaker, tumas ang average na presyo ng well-milled na bigas sa buong bansa mula 42 pesos per kilo noong June 2022, 45 pesos per kilo na ang presyo noong nakaraang buwan, one year into this administration. Maliban sa bigas, hindi rin maayos ang track record ng self-appointed agriculture secretary sa pagpapababa ng presyo ng iba pang basic agricultural products gaya ng asukal at sibuyas. Ang matik na tugon lagi ay importasyon. Nagimport ng sibuyas sa panahon pa na nagsimula na ang pag-aani ng mga lokal na onion producer. May pagkakataon din po na nagimport ng toneto niladang asukal mula sa tatlong kumpanya habang wala pang aprobadong sugar order. At the least, this is unsound policy. At its worst, this indicates possible government bias and sponsorship of smuggling. Not to mention the clear neglect of local farmers and producers who are most affected by price shocks to agricultural products. All these form part of the worst picture of the agricultural sector we have seen in years. Noong nakaraang taon, naitala ng bansa ang pinakamataas na agriculture trade deficit sa loob ng mahigit apat na dekada. Nakakapangamba na lumit pa ang bahagi ng agrikultura sa ekonomiya ng Pilipinas. 9.4% in the first quarter of 2022 to 8.7% in the second quarter of 2023. Paano tayo uunlad kung hindi tiyak na may pagkain sa mesa ng bawat pamilyang Pilipino? Sa usapin naman ng trabaho, kahit na sinasabi ng Malakanyang na 4.5% na lamang o di kaya ay apat o lima sa bawat isandaang Pilipino ang walang trabaho noong Abril, ang bilang na ito ay pangalawang pinakamataas sa Southeast Asia. Doble din 'yan ang porsyento na mga kabataang walang trabaho. Nasasayang ang potensyal na mga kabataan kabilang ang mga nagsipagtapos ng K-12 at kolehiyo. At patunay nito, ang 10% na mga kabataang may trabaho nga pero kinakapos sa working hours o tumatanggap ng trabahong nangangailangan ng mas mababang competences. Dagdag pa 'yan, Mister Speaker, kasama sa government data ng bilang na mga merong trabaho ang informal workers na bumubuo sa 73 sa bawat isandaang may trabaho. Kung susuriin din ang mga nalilikhang trabaho sa ilalim ng kasalukuyang administrasyon, walo sa bawat sampung trabahong ito ay part-time. Mula nang maupo ang bagong administrasyon noong nakaraang taon hanggang Abril ng taong ito, mahigit limang million Pilipino ang nadagdag na part-time na manggagawa habang mahigit apat na million ang nabawas mula sa full-time na manggagawa. This administration should touch some grass. Kapag tinanong natin ang ating mga kababayan, dumarami ang nagsasabing sila ay mahirap o di kaya ay borderline poor. Ito ay lagpas 22 million na mga pamilya o 81% ng lahat ng mga pamilya sa bansa. Sa kabilang banda, tumas pa ang net worth ng sampung pinakamayayamang Pilipino mula 1.8 trillion patungong 2 trillion. Pagdating sa GDP growth o paglago diumanon ng ekonomiya, sino ba talaga ang makikinabang dito? Walang iba kundi ang malalaking negosyante, mga kroni o oligarko. Sila rin ang mas makikinabang sa big-ticket infrastructure projects sa ilalim ng Build Better More. Sa panahong magagamit na ng taong bayan ang mga proyektong ito, magiging paraan pa para mangulekta ng mga bayaring regular na magtataas ng singil. May grand infrastructure program pero hindi signifikanteng bahagi ng mga ipapatayo ang mga silid aralan na sadyang napakakulang sa mga pampublikong paaralan. Lubhang nakakadismaya na ang inihahing tugon sa classroom shortage ay hybrid o blended learning. Napahirap para sa mga kababayan nating walang reliable internet connection, gadgets, at kagamitan. Binanggit sa Sona ng Malakanyang na may 52 higher education institutions na kabilang sa World University Rankings. Pero technically, halo-halo ang reference ng Malakanyang at hindi lahat ay World University Rankings. Sinama ang Times Higher Education Asia Rankings, QS Asia Rankings, pati ang QS Stars Audit System. While we recognize the efforts of our universities that have been working hard despite insufficient state support, nililinaw natin na misleading ang bilang na 52, Mister Speaker. At ang pagbanggit nito ay nagtatakap lamang sa katotohanan na may krisi sa edukasyon sa Pilipinas habang iniinda ng 51 na mga SUC ang mas mababang pondo sa unang budget ng Marcos Jr. admin. Nakakadismaya na pati ang Sona ay kailangan pang ifact-check instead of living up to the highest standards of writing. Hindi ito magandang ejemplo sa mga kabataan at estudyante. Wala nang intensyon ang DEEPED at ang Marcos Jr. admin na tugunan ang dinat ng krises sa edukasyon at hinahayaan ang mga kondisyong nagpapalala ng mental health crisis sa hanay ng mga estudyante. Compared to the rest of the world, mas mataas ang depression and anxiety rates sa mga Pilipinong Gen Z. Sa mga mag-aaral sa basic education, umaabot sa 404 ang naging biktima ng suicide noong school year 2021 hanggang 2022. Pero, nauna pang gumulong ang mandatory ROTC sa unang taon ng rehemen sa halip na tugunan ang mga problemang nabanggit. sa halip na tugunan ang mga problemang nabanggit. Mr. Speaker, the State of the Nation is far from sound. Mababa ang kalidad ng pamumuhay, naghihirap ang mahihirap, nananatiling barat ang sahod, napakaconte ng dekalidad na trabaho sa bansa, inaasa sa dayuhang pamumuhunan ang paglikha ng mga trabaho. Nakaayon sa big business and foreign labor demand ang review ng K-12 program at walang konkretong commitment na itigil ang systematic labor export. Actually, gobyerno pa mismo ang patuloy na nagtutulak sa mga Pilipino na mga ibang bansa. Sinabi pa sa nakaraang Sona na competitive advantage natin ang service workers na kalakhan ay mistulang binubugaw sa mga dayuhang kumpanya o sa abroad. Tila ba magandang bagay ang sapilitang pangigibang bansa ng ating mga kababayan? Walang konkretong mga hakbang para makalikha ng enabling conditions na siya maghikayat sa ating mga OFW na bumalik at maayos na makapag reintegrate sa lipunan natin. Panghuli, Mr. Speaker, pumupustura ang malakanyang bilang kalaban ng korapsyon at tagapagtanggol ng batas. This is done to project a good image to the international community. Ngunit hindi kaaya-aya sa imahe ng bansa, lalo na sa ating justice system na mismong gobyerno natin ang pumoprotektas sa dating Pangulong Rodrigo Duterte na managot para sa madugong gyera kontra droga. Hindi may tatanggi na kinitel ng gyerang ito ang buhay na mga kapakabataan at inosenteng mahihirap. Kaya may dapat na managot. Sa kasamaang palad, pumasok pa tayo sa new phase ng anti-drug campaign na pinamumunuhan ng Marcos Junior Admin kung saan meron ang tatlong daang naitalang kaso ng pagpatay sa loob ng isang taon. Higit pa ito sa opesyal na bilang ng mga pinatay sa huling taon ni dating Pangulong Duterte. Nananatili ang kasalukuyang Pangulo bilang Chair ng Notorious Task Force El Cac na sangkot sa mga maanomaliyang programa. Kabilang dyan ang Barangay Development Program na walang maisumiting detalyadong listahan ng mga proyekto noong nakaraang budget deliberations. Dagdag dyan ang sapilitang pagpapasuko sa mga ordinaryong mamamayang biktima ng red-dagging para mapalobo ang bilang ng rebel surrenderes. Paano magagampana ng kabataan ang pagiging pag-asa ng bayan kung nakakulong pa rin ang mga young political prisoners gaya ni Frenchy May Cumpyo na alagad ng media sa Eastern Visayas? Naging totoo na rin ang pangamba natin na gagamitin ang terror law laban sa mga kababayan nating nagsusulong lamang ng kapakanan ng kapwa. Kahapon, bumisita dito sa camera ang tatlong kabataang human rights defender mula sa Southern Tagalog na kumakaharap ng gawa-gawang complaint na nakabatay sa terror law. Maliban sa kanila, meron ang 15 o 75 katao na binansagan bilang mga terorista ng Marcos Junior Terror Council sa unang taon ng administrasyon kabilang ang apat na leader katutubo mula sa Cordillera. Naging panauhin natin noong Lunes si Dayan Gumanaw, kabataan na survivor ng abduction na mga puersa ng estado sa ilalim ng administrasyong Marcos Junior. Dinukot siya sa Cebu kasama ang kanyang partner na si Armand Dayoha dahil lamang sa pagiging teachers' unionist. Sa gitna ng atake ng estado sa mga kritiko at mamamayang nagpapahayag ng kanilang mga hinahing at sa panahon ng panlilinlang gamit ang traditional media at social media, hinding-hindi po titigil ang mga kabataan sa paghahangad ng tunay na pagbabago. Kung totoong nais nating umbangat ang purchasing power ng mga Pilipino sa 2024, dapat isertify as urgent ang pagpapataas ng sahod ng mga nagtatrabaho sa pribado man o sa gobyerno. Paramihin natin ang regular na trabaho sa bansa at wakasan ang malawakang kontraktualisasyon. Kesa dagdagan ang buwis na magiging pasani ng mga ordinaryong Pilipino, dapat mga bilyonaryo ang patawan ng dagdag na buwis. Dapat tanggalin ang VAT na nananatili sa mga batayang bilihin, kuryente, tubig, at langis. Kaugnay ng paggamit ng nakabubuhay na sahod, ang pambansang industrialisasyon na nagbubunga ng sapat na trabaho para sa kapwa Pilipino dito po sa ating bayan. Susirin ang national industrialization para magamit natin ang sariling likas na yaman sa pagpapaunlad ng sariling bayan at hindi tayo matali o umasa na lamang sa panlilimos ng dayuhang pamumuhunan at pautang. Nakasalalay din ang sahod at trabaho na kabubuhay sa pagpapalakas ng sektor ng agrikultura. Sa pamamagitan po nito, matitiyak ang supply ng pagkain at iba pang pangangailangan sa araw-araw. Ito ang magbibigay daan para makamit ang totoong strong macroeconomic fundamentals na dama ng kabataang Pilipino. Sa 2024 National Budget, dapat paramihin ang bilang ng mga estudyating makakatanggap ng libreng edukasyon at dapat maging abot kamay ang mga serbisyo sa campus gaya ng dormitoryo, transportasyon, at pagkain. Dapat walang SUC ang makatanggap ng mas mababang subsidiyo mula sa pamahalaan kesa sa kailangan nila. Dapat magpataw ng moratorium sa pagtaas ng matrikula at iba pang bayarin sa pampubliko at pribadong paaralan. Dapat magpatupad ng mga patakaran na mangangalaga sa karapatang pangakademiko ng mga estudyante kabilang ang karapatang magpahayag at magorganisa. To close, Mr. Speaker, ilan lamang yan sa mga ginigiit ng kabataan na hindi masasagot na mga bagong logo at slogan. No amount of rebranding can cover up the perennial ills that inflict the nation and are left unaddressed. Walang bagong Pilipinas kung rebranded na mga lumang gawi ang inihahain natin sa sambayan ang nagugutom at naghihikahos. Ilamang po, Mr. Speaker, maraming salamat.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member to interpolate the Honorable Manuel, I move that we refer his speech to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to avail of the privilege hour, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Concurrent Resolution Number 16 and may request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title and contents of House Concurrent Resolution Number 16.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. The Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 16. Concurrent Resolution Providing for the Legislative Calendar for the Second Regular Session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines. Resolved by the House of Representatives, the Senate Concurring that the Legislative Calendar for the Second Regular Session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines shall be as follows. Calendar of Session: Second Regular Session. 1. Commencement of Session: July 24, 2023 to September 29, 2023. 2. Adjournment of Session: September 30, 2023 to November 5, 2023. 3. Resumption of Session: November 6, 2023 to December 15, 2023. 4. Adjournment of Session: December 16, 2023 to January 21, 2024. 5. Resumption of Session: January 22, 2024 to March 22, 2024. 6. Adjournment of Session: March 23, 2024 to April 28, 2024. 7. Resumption of Session: April 29, 2024 to May 24, 2024. Cinide Adjournment: Number 8. Adjournment of Session: May 25, 2024 to July 21, 2024. Signed, Marcelino C. Libanan, Minority Leader, and Signed, Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, Majority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 16.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. Those in favor of House Concurrent Resolution Number 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Concurrent Resolution Number 16 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with the rules of governing inquiries in the aid of legislation, I move that refer the following House Resolutions to appropriate committees as follows. House Resolution Number 975 to the Committee of Bank Finances and Intermediaries. House Solution 978 to Basic Education and Culture. House Solution 998 to the Committee on National Defense and Security. House Solution 999 to Committee of Agriculture and Food. House Solution 1008 to the Committee of Bank and Financial Intermediaries. House Solution 1014 to the Committee of Energy. 1019 to the Committee of Basic Education and Culture. House Solution 1023 to the Committee of Health. House Solution 1024 to Committee of Climate Change. House Solution 1025 to Committee of Women, Gender Equality. House Solution 1038 to Committee of Basic Education and Culture. House Solution 1042 to Committee of Tourism. House Solution 1053 to Committee of Foreign Affairs. House Solution 1057 to Committee of Health. House Solution 1058 to Committee of Trade and Industry. House Solution 1062 to Committee of Agriculture and Food. House Solution 1063 to Committee of Women and Gender Equality. And House Solution 1067 to Committee of Labor and Employment. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees. Representative Versosa Junior to the Basic Education and Culture. Representative Robes to the Committee of Public Works and Highways. Representative Castro to the Committee of Basic Education and Culture. Representative Brosas to the Committee of Local Government. Representative Manuel to the Committee of Foreign Affairs. Representative Herrera to the Committee of Public Information. Representative Plaza to the Committee of Agriculture and Food. Representative Abante to the Committee of Basic Education and Culture. Representative Magcino to the Committee of Overseas Workers Affairs. Representative Arenas to the Committee of Health and Foreign Affairs. Representative Bolilia to the Committee of Economic Affairs and Representative Castro to the Committee of Disaster Resilience. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 8150 from the Committees on Public Order and Safety and National Defense and Security to the Committees on National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety. And House Resolution Number...
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. Please proceed.
And the House Resolution Number 215 from the Committee on Energy to the Committees on Energy and Public Works and Highways.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of Journal Number 1 dated July 24, 2023 and Journal Number 2 dated July 25, 2023 were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading of the said journals. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the aforementioned House journals. Is there any objection? Chair here stand. The motion's approved. The reading of the said journals is dispensed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 1 dated July 24, 2023 and Journal Number 2 dated July 25, 2023. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Journal Number 1 dated July 24, 2023 and Journal Number 2 dated July 25, 2023 are hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until Monday, 31st of July, 2023 at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. Session is adjourned until July 31, 3 p.m.
Thank you.